It's seven o'clock and our first hearing is petition 973 Joseph Keel of 145 Cranberry Drive, an appeal of the building inspector's decision. Would you like to meditate?
Sure.
Okay, please.
The Halifax zoning order of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 11th, 2022 at 7:10 PM in the Order Selectment Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax on an application by Joseph Keel to appeal and overturn the building inspector's zoning enforcement officer's determination dated May 16th, 2022. Said property is owned by Joseph Keel of 145 Cranberry Drive, Halifax, Mass. 02338. It's shown on Assessor's map, 49 lot 45 S, Title Reference Book 45, excuse me, 54566P62. For the building inspector's ZEO, after numerous visual inspections from Cranberry Drive, this office has determined that you are utilizing your residence as a light industrial use and storage. The residence is owned AR and according to Chapter 167.7, Scheduled Use Regulations, this use is prohibited in an AR zone. Furthermore, your business does not qualify as a customary home business or professional office studio as the business does not operate within the zone. You're hereby ordered to cease and desist from the light industrial use and storage at 145 Cranberry Drive. You are ordered to remove all commercial vehicles and equipment stored at the property within 30 days of that clutter, or you may be subject to fines of up to $300 per day for violation. For the applicant, we seek to overturn Mr. Perry's determination. Mr. Keel runs Title V inspection business. He's sole proprietor with no employees. There's no sign for the business. His only mode of transportation is one of his two personally owned dump trucks. His numerous pieces of equipment are stored on the job site primarily. There is no increased traffic. Only Mr. Keel is going to work and coming home during the evening. Mr. Perry has set a precedent with his previous determination at 680 Plymouth Street Stadium there is no violation regarding another contractor with a larger, more numerous pieces of equipment and trucks. And the application is, excuse me, the applicant is appealing the zoning inspector's determination in accordance with Halifax zoning bylaws, Section 167.7C, Table of Use Regulations, Area Zone Residential Petition. There is evidence.
We all went to the site, Jerry and I and Dan. And what we saw there, we have, we saw the bobcat. We saw a truck and a trailer. The truck, it was a one-ton truck that was, Mr. Keel drives back and forth to his house. Now, there was a bobcat with a couple of piles of three-quarter inch stone and a pile of moss. I think the moss was used for his house. Or other than, other than that, I mean, there was a couple of other pieces of equipment that were there. And what do you think, Jerry?
Yeah, there's, there was enough stuff there that you could say something was going on. But in all, in due respect, I'm hoping that this meeting here, maybe neighbors and Mr. Keel and his family there can become a good neighbor. That's what we're trying to look at here. We don't want to have anyone have problems. And I know there's emotions on both sides, no question about it. Is there a way that the Keel family and the neighbors can get together and come up with some kind of items that can't happen there anymore? I mean, he has a 10-ton dump truck. I'm sure that that's one item that might not be parked there anymore. As far as going out in the morning, employees shouldn't be there to help him load on equipment. That equipment should be loaded if he's taking something out, it should be loaded in the afternoon when he comes home. Should back his vehicle in so there's no beep, beep, beep going on. There should be no other gravel being used there or stone that's from another job site that he uses to load his vehicles. That's not a neighborhood. He is allowed to have a truck to go back and forth to work. And he is allowed to have, if he's got a small backhoe or out in the backyard, he can use it for his own house, his work. But that doesn't mean that he can do, have people come there in the morning to help him load up and be an annoyance to the, to the neighbors. But we're hoping that there might be some agreement between us. If there is, terrific. But he cannot do what he's doing now. That's the way I see it.
Dan, what do you think?
Well, I agree you can't run that type of business in a residential zone. Now, can you drive your vehicle to and from work every day? I would say yes, you can. You know, is the trailer part of his vehicle? Maybe it is. You know, that's, I think, being fair, but you can't store materials there. You can't, I saw no sign of employees. I don't think that's an issue. So that's, that's how I feel. I think, I think we've had this type of question before us before and we've said, yes, you can have your commercial vehicle as your transport vehicle to and from work, but you know, you can't run a business out of there. It's residential.
I mean, his truck is, that's his personal truck that he drives back and forth to work with. And if he's got the trailer on the truck with a, with a piece of equipment like that, with a bobcat, that's considered a one, you know, one piece of equipment connected to...
Yeah, what's the difference? You backing up a pickup truck with or without a trailer, really no difference.
And the dump truck, yeah, the big 10-wheeler shouldn't be stored at his house. That should be on a...
Which I think he addressed that.
Yeah. Anybody from the audience would like, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, I don't think anybody has a problem with driving a 12 GBW dump truck there. As far as backing in a trailer with a piece of equipment on it for the night, as long as he's not unloading equipment, loading equipment, you know, it gets loud doing that stuff, dropping ramps and so forth. So I think, you know, that, it just can't be a constant coming and going. And that's opposite.
One question with being a neighborhood, you know, it's kind of like, is there a covenant that supports stuff that you can't do that there?
It's a, it's a residential neighborhood. Strictly residential neighborhood.
Right, well, like in Ohio and circle, you can't park, you know, you can't park a boat, you can't park, you know, or maybe stuff like that. That would be my only other restriction.
I mean, the guy next door to him, if you're looking at his house on his left, he's got a backhoe and a, and a little bobcat, but that's for his own personal use. He's not taking them out on job sites. And Mr. Keel is taking that bobcat on the job site. And he had parked in the previous months, he had parked his 10-wheeler there. And people don't want to see that. I mean, you live in a residential, quiet residential neighborhood, you don't want to see that. And with a little bit of understanding, I think this problem would go away. Mr. Keel, what would you like to say?
Well, I'm willing to work with the board, you know, and keep the 10-wheeler truck off-site.
And, you know, your dump truck is, is considered a, you know, personal vehicle because I, I own and I take it home myself, you know, and it's just not, like we said in the past, you know, you could...
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to work with the guys and, you know, keep the big truck on the site.
You, you can work with us, but you have to make it, make your neighbors happy. And as, as long as your neighbors are happy and we're happy, you know? And go ahead, Mr. Perry.
I understand what Mr. Keel was saying about the 10-wheeler dump truck. What's the biggest piece of equipment he has right now? He has an excavator also that is large.
I mean, that's what, we don't, we don't want any heavy equipment in, on that property at all.
I think what I'm trying to say is when you make a statement like, I'll, I'll work with the board and I won't take the 10-wheeler dump truck there. So does he keep his mini-escalator there with skid stairs, rock hound, these other trailers? I mean...
He's sure you can find a place.
As a caveat, I don't think that that, you know, I'm trying to say, I mean, he agreed to keep his 10-wheeler out there. I think there's more to the story than that.
I think if he's not using the equipment for his personal yard, maybe it shouldn't be it. It's on the trailer because he's going to be using it in the morning is one thing. But even there, to store his equipment, that's another thing.
I would agree with you. If it comes in on trail and it goes out on a trail...
Right.
Or he's used for his next day so he doesn't have to go and pick it up in the morning, he can get right to the job site. I don't think anybody has a problem with that. They're not going to hear the banging and clanking and chains, you know, tie-down chains, you know, banging around.
Can we make it clear as to what exactly we're talking about?
Can you state your name, please?
Excuse me?
State your name.
Okay, Tempesto, 135 Cranberry Drive. Can we make it clear as to what exactly is going to be allowed? If it's a one-ton pickup truck, no problem. I mean, that's his transportation back and forth to work. But he claims that that smaller excavator is there so he can do, work on his own property. But he doesn't do work on his own property, it's just there so that he doesn't have to store it elsewhere. You know, we've heard the stories about how he works 12-hour days. We've heard the stories about how he keeps his equipment at his office place and situate. He can find solutions to his company, to equipment. Now, you know, on a Saturday, he didn't see any employees there, but he has employees coming to his house every single day. They, they start the day there, they load up their vehicles and off they go. He had plenty of time now to prepare for that inspection, in addition to just even prior to that, so he's been very mindful of keeping things off the property. But it's just not a deterrent, in my opinion, that's the way it always is. So if we say a one-ton truck, that's a one-ton truck that we can look at. On that, I don't think so. It's a business that's being run out of his home property, which is in our residential neighborhood. Yes, we have covenants, whether they were shared with him or not, I don't know. But there is covenants in our neighborhood.
We just didn't, some of them were more restricted when I was only five, wasn't it, was I asked the question?
And, and they were.
Did you write property on it?
Yeah, I can give you property then. Yep.
You, uh...
I don't have a property.
Oh, oh.
I don't think, I put it in here.
Who you have, you can, even to our lady, I would drop the question.
Ms. Jim, may I say something?
Sure.
I'm not finished.
Hold on a second, let her finish.
I want to thank you all sincerely. I appreciate all the time that you put into, you know, invested in being thoughtful about this zoning violation. But we're looking to protect our investment, our property. We're, we're trying to maintain that value as well as have the enjoyment being in our yard. Our homes are sanctuary. We don't want to hear this coming and going all day, every day.
Mr. Keel.
Can I say something?
Mr. Keel.
Uh, my wife, she had something.
Mr. Keel.
I don't understand, like, I don't know what the problem is. Like, I really, I don't get it. Nobody's coming and going. He goes to work at 7:00 in the morning and comes home at 9:00. There's no employees. I don't...
Every single morning, there's someone at that house.
Is there, well, especially when you're always washing our house?
I'm up at 5:00 every morning.
I call my mom. But you know what? Nobody's getting out. No one...
Address the chairman. Everything goes to the chairman, okay?
Nobody loads anything in the morning. Everything is loaded the afternoon or the night prior. And I am the one who primarily helps him. And we have a two-year-old and a five-year-old. If he's really being out loud, you really think I would let him do that and wake my kids up? They sleep till at least 7:00 in the morning and then they start going to bed at 7:00. They read, brush their teeth, and they're asleep by 8:00. There would not be noise going on to keep them up because I'm all done at that time of day. Like, the day's open. So I don't know what this banging all through the day is. Like, I don't, these crazy accusations, like, I don't understand. And I've said before, they just didn't like looking at it from their depth. Why are you staring into my yard? What offense or look somewhere else? I can have whatever I want in my yard. We wanted to put an addition or garage or something over there. We've been there for a little bit over a year. And we have kids, we, we have stuff to do. And last time, they said how we had trees removed to put his work stuff. We had 30 trees taken down in our yard because we had no backyard for our kids to play in. And there was a couple of blocks of driveway that was a dent. Then when the tree guy came to look, they said, you should take these down too. So we did. Why wouldn't we leave them over there? We did. But it was never going to be wrong for a job. Like, this is our home. This isn't a construction site. And it's a sorry excuse for wanting it is. Like, we're working on it. You know what? And I want to defend it in my backyard. I wanted a place for my kids and my dogs to be safe and play, but all this is on hold. Not that it matters, because, you know, why would anybody else matter? But everything's on hold because we don't know what we're doing because of all this. And if you drive around town, people have more than what we have at our house and then some. And that's okay. And I understand the rules are the rules. And we have that for a reason. They should be applied to everybody. And just because you live in a neighborhood doesn't mean your neighbors get to tell you what you can and can't do in your yard.
It's a residential neighborhood.
No, but I understand that.
You have to be courteous to the people that are...
You're not really making extra noise and you're not... I'll talk to the other neighbors too. And nobody's bothered by it, but nobody wants to get in the middle, they don't want to get involved, which is fine. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to either. But it's just, I just feel like this whole thing is just more out of proportion when they could have come to us and had a conversation and said, listen, this is what's bothering me. What can we do to compromise and fix it? But that didn't happen. And I still, I don't even know how to fix it. I don't know how to make it better. I don't want to be...
We're going to try, we're going to try to help you to make it, we're going to try to help you to make it better and with your neighbors. And if you can, if you can, you know, adhere to the conditions that we put for you and no, no equipment be stored at, at your property other than the truck or the skid steer. Once in a while, you're going to bring it home to do a load work on your yard. Other than that, all that equipment has to be removed. I mean, I'm, I'm only talking for myself. I don't know about the board. Anybody would like, you know?
And I know people can have that equipment at their house as long as it stays there, which, I mean, I don't...
I mean, your next-door neighbor has equipment, but that's his personal. It does not move out of that, yeah.
No, I know.
But your equipment...
And if ours does move, it moves in the morning. And it doesn't always move. If it moves, sometimes it stays on a job site for a week, sometimes it moves from one job site to the other. But like, all the materials, everything needs to get shipped directly to the job site. Doesn't go to our house. It doesn't, there's nothing, no back and forth extra traffic he needs and comes home. And, you know, we try to do things as quietly as possible and not, and consider it personal. You know, but if people don't tell you what's going on, then you can't...
We'll try to do it.
Ms. Tempesto, she mentioned if we don't like it, we should move. We've been there for years. We have been there to, we have to look at it. We have no choice. Our yard, we get the brunt of this. We have no choice but to look at this. I mean, to be honest with you, they come, he does come back with stone and everything during the day, with the 10-ton, he dumps that stuff. I'm not sure why we have to make concessions for someone who's trying to run a business out of here and change the neighborhood. I mean, there was a lot of talk about agendas before last meeting. Let's not make this about agendas or personal things. It's a residential neighborhood and it means a lot to us and to our neighbors. We have a lot of young families moving and, and it's, it's really a scary situation. And unfortunately, we get the brunt of all the problems.
And also, just like I had, we did go over and speak with our husband, I did, on two different occasions, and that one was resolved. And the other, you know, would just like to add yet again, is that all this is bringing to with his company name. This is a company.
I, by the way, we did speak a couple of times. Last time was the fall. And he came over, he said, what do you want me to do? I said, Joe, I'm not trying to be a jerk. Let's see what you do during the winter, your slower months, see if you make any improvements, see if you can come up with any solutions. We'll talk in the spring. And then it just got worse and worse. He never did one thing enough. All the trucks are parked there because he wasn't that busy. And I, I...
Ms. Jim, I have something to say.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Do you want to?
Lou, I, I did talk to you the one time. You told me that you were going to talk to your wife and then you're going to come back to me. So, I mean, there was no discourse after that fact until I saw you taking pictures of the truck when I was home at lunchtime.
Well, let's see if we can iron this up right now.
All right, good. I have a question for you. So, in my mind, how I'm looking at this, is to see what your community has of this. There's a difference between storing and parking. So if all they're doing is just bringing home his truck and his trailer at night, parking for the night and leaving in the morning, I mean, how many people have their commercial vehicles around town?
I don't, I don't think that that would be a problem.
I think it's the storing.
It's the storage and the loading, unloading and operating a business during the day.
Right. So this is, I'm trying to parse it in my head, what's defined it here? So for the neighbors and everybody, you can't deny somebody that goes, can drive home at night, parking, driving.
Yeah. No, I don't use it. And, and I...
Anybody has a problem.
Right. And I agree that the trailer is an extension of...
As long as it's attached to the truck.
Says attached.
With a T-foot equipment chain down on it.
Doesn't come off.
It's just simply going to back it in at night and take off in the morning.
Right.
I don't think anybody has an issue with that. And, I mean, I can't speak for Mr. Tempesto, but I'm, I think that's reasonable.
Well, what I'm, what I'm asking here is, what's our authority? I don't think we have the authority to tell somebody they can't drive home at night and park.
Oh, no, no.
So, but, but what we, so what I'm trying to do is satisfy their question over here. So, in my mind, how I'm thinking is, you know, you can't have employees, you can't store materials, you can't unload materials. I mean, you know, once in a while, he's going to take a, you know, a vehicle off and you can see him using it on his property. You can do that. Anybody can rent a trailer and unload it on his property and use it. But that, we're talking about a very rare circumstance, right? And that's going to be on you to, I don't know, what you can, that, we don't have the power, I don't think, to tell somebody they can't drive home at night. So that's my, that's my mindset. But certainly, you can't have employees, you can't store materials, so on and so forth.
During sidewalk, I noticed there were manhole cover rises there, there were D-bots rises there. I mean, it's obviously, he's not using it in his own garage, but obviously, so...
So what's the pleasure of the board? And what would you, anybody want to put into a motion that we could do this and have them get together and try it? Start this?
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think...
I think you need to put...
All I think we can do is, are we upholding the cease and desist?
I agree with you.
And then, you know, we can't tell them that he can't park at night.
No.
That's what I'm trying to talk about. But beyond that, really, it's out of our, am I wrong about this? It's out of our hands after that?
I think it would be helpful to see the name of the covenant, to see what the name of the restrictions take. Can I...
But that's, that's nothing to do with us.
No, but that way they can at least stop that portion of the home.
Right. I just wanted to read it.
Mr. Perry?
The covenant issue, I agree that they should be looked at, but that's more of a civil issue. This is not, doesn't come before this tour. So it's not...
Simply, they can definitely use their property as they see fit, but they don't want to create an...
Well, within, within the bounds of zoning.
You don't want to create something that makes their house worth less and not worth living at their own home.
But, but running a business is not allowed by the zoning.
Mr. Perry?
Obviously, we're here because the bylaws are important to protect everybody's best interest in the town of Halifax. That's what they have to, right? So that's all we can do. That's, that's I know. As far as the covenants go, again, that's a silverback between Mr. Tempesto and Mr. Keel. If they want to try to enforce something with the homeowners association or whatever is down there, I don't know the makeup of the structure.
I just don't want to have us enforcing something that means nothing.
Well, you can impose the bylaws.
Yeah, we're really not, we're either overturning the decision or agreeing with the decision. I'm just trying to define for everybody...
What's acceptable.
Yeah, what, what we're talking about. We're talking about you can't run a business, but we don't, I don't feel we have the right that somebody that can't park their vehicle, like they go to and from work, we don't, we don't have that authority.
Right.
Okay, so, but yes, no business can be run out of there. So...
So what's, so what we have to do then, what's in front of us, is we have to agree that what he has there is not, is, we have to agree with the... Building inspector. Building inspector. But we don't.
Well, we got motion on the appeal.
On the, the appeal, yeah. And we have to put conditions on it, or?
No, we can't.
We can't?
We can't. There's no conditions to put on it.
No. You can say that he can't?
I think it's bringing...
I think it's... Upholding, yeah.
I think it's pretty clear that amongst the discussion here that we've all kind of agreed that's acceptable for bringing his six-wheeler dump truck home. And if he happens to have a trailer with a piece of equipment on it for the night and he leaves the next day, I think that's pretty much understood as cut and dry. So...
But there can't be storage of stuff with the...
Materials.
Yeah.
Who wants to make a motion?
So, I'm trying to word this here properly because I'm not sure about...
We're waiting on you.
Thanks.
Jerry, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, petition 973 to uphold the building inspector's zoning enforcement officer's decision.
Do I say that again?
I'll make a motion, 973, to uphold the building inspector's decision.
All right, we have a second? From what we've seen, yes, I'll have to second that. Tina?
I think so.
Jerry?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes.
So I think us saying that just means, you know, bring your truck and trailer home, but it just, it can't be stored as well.
I think it's, we had to give him a reasonable amount of time to clarify a little bit.
So, well, what's, what's the reasonable amount of time? 30 days?
I would say 30 days is sufficient.
Yeah, we're giving you 30 days to straighten up your yard and, you know, clean it up the way, take all the equipment that is not supposed to be there off-site and is that fair?
Any storage material to ask to, to leave?
But they can have their own material.
They can have their own.
More material that you're using for yourself.
Yeah, like a mouse, you're bringing a mouse stone to do your, yeah, that's, that's not a, that's not a problem.
Well, stone, if they're using stone, but, you know, you're, you're going to be able to see quickly, you know? Somebody has, you know, I've had loads of stone dropped at my property, put around things. So it's going to be common sense will dictate from here on out, I think, right?
And I would strive to try and get some neighborly love here. I know it's tough, but these people do have a life that they have to live. You certainly deserve the residential neighborhood that you're in. And I'm sure that working together, they can clean up the yard and they can still run their business the way they, they should. And that means the truck going in and out when I'm getting here. No storage, no 10-ton dump truck or any of that stuff, do you?
Or large excavators or anything like that?
It is a neighborhood. You got to remember that. But there's no reason why you can't be neighbors and good neighbors. There are certain times that you're going to have to overlook some things and just like they will. But I mean, you got to get together in this. This is, this is something that you don't want to have, just building up all the time. It's, it's not worth it. That's all.
Is that agreeable? You got 30 days to do what you have to do and Mr. Perry will, you can talk to Mr. Perry about it. All right? Yes, ma'am?
Monterey Fair, 127 Cranberry Drive, I'm two doors away. What are the consequences if these things that you're saying do not happen?
That will be... That will be, that will be the building inspector's decision.
Zoning enforcement officer will deal with that.
Thank you.
Moving on to 975, Robert and Helen Hagerty, if you have a mind reading. Tina? Tina?
I really should read the last one. Halifax. Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, seven twenty, in the Board of Selectmen's meeting room in Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-nine Clement Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application of Robert A., Robert and Helen, Helen, yes, I'm sorry. Hagerty, for a special permit to build an in-law apartment to be located at eight Christmas Tree Lane, Halifax, Mass., oh, two, three, three, eight. Said property is owned by Robert and Helen of eight Christmas Tree Lane. As shown on the assessor's map, forty-nine lot seven, C four, four, three, four, one, nine, page two fifty-six. The applicants are seeking a special permit to build an in-law apartment within their existing thirteen-hundred-plus square foot conforming addition. This is project to violate Halifax zoning bylaw section one sixty-seven, seven D twelve, schedule of use regulations, area zone for business residential position nine seventy-five.
Do you have a revised plan with you?
I do. Yes, I do. Do you have them? So, I have them specifically.
Was it a revised one, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could hear you guys, I just couldn't talk back.
Thank you for still being on.
I could hear the whole room even.
Is this where the opening is gonna be? Can you tell me if these are revised?
Those ones you have. No, that's sealed.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Looking at the floor, and you'll notice that the in-law addition is. Eight, three, one.
They need a variance, what size?
What's happening?
They need a variance, what size?
The sizes.
So, this is, this is all the issue.
It's too big before.
Other issue, okay.
Original.
It was over thirteen-hundred square feet last month in Dallas.
Yeah, now it's down to thousand ninety-one square. Which would look like at least fifty percent of that shared as well.
A proportion of it.
Yeah.
A proportion of it, yeah.
So, what was the shared living area?
I think it's.
Family room itself, isn't it?
Where the deck is, right? Kind of like in front of the deck. Yeah. This part here that's shaded in red is the new addition that we're seeking to put on. This is our house. So, the shared area will be, we're extending the, um, the line out. So, this is all gonna be shared, it's all shared through here, and then you walk into the, no doors, it's all open space right there.
So, they don't share it, too?
They share the sole space right in front of you.
We share all utilities.
I'll get a. Does one of the existing setback requirements for the lot? There's someone printing on what ones within, I mean, within required distances to make the setback requirements for the street. The lot is close to one point three acres, everything equally meets the existing setback requirements.
I think what we went over last time, I think it was really the.
The side.
The side of it was more than that, it brought itself right into, into line with it. I was on Zoom for this last time, so I didn't see them.
Yeah, on the side. I think they had a door there, so that's.
I just wanted to contain that.
Same utilities, everything, same utilities, all that, everything. You combine.
Everything's combined, utilities and all that.
And that was the only push to the solid.
Yep.
Fringing over here.
No, nothing at all.
Nobody were there.
No, 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 they had no.
Just the size.
Variance is from to the. So, what do you think? I think it's fine. I'll make a motion to approve petition number nine seven six.
A second.
Revised, with revised drawings. Second.
A second motion.
Well, conditions, uh, blood relatives.
The opening stays all as the standard itself, that standard.
That came up at the last meeting.
Yeah. Okay. So, with the standard, yeah, okay, so, yes.
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 Yes. And myself, yes. If it passes, that deserves. Sorry we had to make you wait.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep them in the file.
Very good.
We need to sign those two. Grab them from the line.
We need to, I want to grab them.
Three skid row board. Two skid row board. I thought it was grabbing. Oh, thank you.
Do we have a hearing for nine seventy-five, Dish Wireless, nine twenty Clement Street, special permit?
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out what I'm doing here.
Sure?
I'm just, I'm trying to do this. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, August eighth, twenty twenty-two, at seven, ten P.M. The Board of Selectmen's room at Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-nine Clement Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application by Dish Wireless LLC for special permit for a wireless communications facility to be located at nine twenty Clement Street, Halifax, Mass., oh, two, three, three. Said property is owned by, I don't know if I'm getting this right. Michael J. Hunnaman and Donald C. Cody, Halifax, nominee trustee of forty Lone Street, Marshfield, Mass., room two oh five oh. As shown on assessor's map, fifty-eight lot three B zero, book one eight five nine four, page one fifty-five. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a wireless communication facility for the collection of antennas of an existing monopole tower with several other carriers, and the placement of a radio, of radio equipment on an existing concrete pad inside the existing fenced compound. The applicant seeks a special permit in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaw section one sixty-seven, four G, four, and, and five. Enumeration of District of Wireless Communications Service, area zoned industrial, petition number nine seventy-six.
All they're doing is adding more antennas to the, at the site. Who's here, who's here for it?
They're supposed to be out in June. Um, they said they might not be present. I told them that they needed to be, but, um, they said that they didn't think it's necessary.
So, all they're doing is adding antennas and.
Right.
Nothing changed, the tower's still the same and. To chairman?
So, uh, the way the bylaw is written, anytime they do any, uh, construction, reconstruction, add antennas, remove antennas to a cellular tower that was built under special permit, S comeback firms on board, to have an adjusted special permit issue. And that's the only reason I denied them, so they had to come here based on the bylaws. There's also federal FCC regulations that says you can't deny. So, my attorney, legal counsel, they said, if you want air on side caution, you're better off to have them all come in and put it in. We made one forty-five, want concentrate them in. We made water tower, we keep on water tower component. So, we make that, everybody comes in.
They have to come.
For informational purposes only, basically, the way the bylaw is written. Because it was built on special permit, and any modifications to that requires them to come back to have their special permit modified.
So, we can, we have to postpone the meeting until next month, so they can come in here, right?
You could approve as is. I mean, can't, you can't deny it. It's basically to go in front of this board to modify the special permit to let them change their antennas, the way the bylaw is written. I see no reason why, it's up to you and not to the board. I see no reason not to move forward.
What's a part of the board?
Like I said, FCC regulation says you can't deny anything. But it also gives us the ability, which is in our bylaw, to make them come in and tell us what they're doing. That's what this is about. They chose us to plan. They're not here, but you can see they're just simply changing our antennas.
And, um, also, uh, ready with equipment on an existing pad.
Yeah, it's already.
I mean, they're not changing anything.
The pads.
The fencing area is still the fencing area with the equipment area. They're taking down some antenna, or they're actually adding antennas in this case, because Dish is not on their ton.
On the same platform.
Correct.
Mr. Gaynor?
Just, just for information, I think they did come in front of the planning board and make a presentation, like Mr. Perry said, there's, it's really no expansion of the area.
No changes.
Construction or anything like that, so they did, uh.
Anybody wants to, what's the pleasure of the board, would we? So, I mean, basically, what you've said is they have to, they have to file to us, and they've done that, so.
Yeah, okay. So, your recommendation is that they, they should come in?
Well, I would believe they have to, I guess.
Oh, you don't.
They, they went in front of the planning.
We can approve it, but.
Okay. Oh, I thought, I thought you said.
The planning board actually weighed the site plan by.
Got you, okay.
And they're telling us what they're doing, so.
Okay.
It's typical stuff. Should we have, should we have sent us a letter, telling us what they're doing?
Some plans, right?
If the plan, then that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This whole application, they're telling us what's going on.
Yeah, I haven't looked at.
I mean, I, I've gone through them.
There's nothing to look at, really.
The formality.
Antennas and electrical box.
All right, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve petition nine seventy-five.
Six.
Six.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. It passes five to zero.
These are for the first two petitions, I believe. Oh, that's this one. Oh, there's the third one.
We have a meeting with Ruda N. Acosta for twenty-two COVID drive for informational.
Of course not.
You wanna come up and tell us what you want?
I also have plans of the property.
You wanna bring it up?
Correct.
So, yeah. Your flowers? And it's the same thing I have, because I haven't been able to use this property. So, we have a two-year last year for a special permit. And that line is up here, so.
Give me. There we go. Give me that one, I'll tell it. What's the other one?
Fuck. Everybody kind of asking that. It's like a little scary. It's awesome, but. All right. Yep.
See this one in its own.
No.
Good catch. I think this is the.
What would you like to give?
So, I don't wanna make any changes, like purchasing over a year of exactly as it is, and as it stands in law. I just wanted to get, I guess, like permits to make it a two-family home. So, if in the future I did wanna rent it out, or I was able to.
You wanna convert from an in-law apartment to a two?
Exactly, yeah, or two families. So, I don't wanna make any changes, I don't believe that I need to as is right now. It has like its own electric, it has own gas, its own septic system, and we bought it that way. We haven't made any.
You bought it as an in-law apartment?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Perry, how does that work? How does that work? Turn it into.
In-law, in-law apartments do not run with the property. Each house, it has to provide a special permit for the in-law, as you know.
Yep. But she wants to turn it into.
Two families are also allowed by special permit.
But she has to get the deed changed from an in-law to a two-family, correct?
You guys may can put deed restrictions on in-law apartments.
There's like a whole thing on it.
What is it? It's a board usually.
You wanna keep it the same as it is and?
You're not gonna do any construction.
Yeah, no changes.
It's a in-law apartment currently, but she wants the ability to turn it. She doesn't have an in-law that wants to live there, so rather than dismantle the thing, she'd like to have a two-family that she's able to rent it either.
Mr. Perry, is it different building codes, bylaw separation, if she goes that route?
I did speak with them about that. Uh, I'd have to respect the premise and to see, you know, how it's constructed right now. I, there is a.
Would have to come up.
There is a possibility they may have to put five H five code between the main residence and, and, uh.
Oh, would have to.
I'm pro to code, uh.
Yeah.
Is there a lawful door between the two currently? No, there's no access within the two homes from each other. They have their own separate entrance and exit into the front and the back of the house.
I did that.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's good.
Before my time.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, no, that's good. They don't share anything in that apartment?
In fact, I know she said they, they share utilities.
Utilities, huh?
Yeah, it's completely separate. Yeah.
You have to come back and file an application for the whole thing and see what we.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, not other than that, now we can say, now, other than, you have to file an application.
Yeah.
And, uh, with Mr. Perry and.
Yeah. Should be scheduled time for you guys to come, like, look at it and expect it.
Make an appointment with me, I'll.
I'm just not as sure trying.
Other than would be.
I'm sorry, what? Um, I'm not sure. I know there are other, like, multi-families, or, I'm sorry, not multi-families, other in-laws. There's like other homes similar to ours for her. Yeah.
No, who lives there right now? Just you?
Right now, it's just me, and I have my cousins living on the side. It's pretty simple. But I would like to eventually have someone leave, since I'm paying for it.
Well, you have to submit a, a plan and what you're gonna do and all that stuff. Then you come back, come back in front of the board and we'll open it.
Yeah. Your insurance company would probably require that as well. Uh, yeah, I mean, right now, they have everything they need. They know the way to set up and everything. There's no, like, entrance to the home, all of that. Uh, but if I don't plan to make any changes, what plan would I present to you? You still need a standard plan from an architect, shall we? Because S for your former registry deeds, passing to you would be bad. Okay, so I would just need those basically re.
You have to put it down on paper, what, what you're really, what you really want.
Yeah.
And present it to the building inspector, and if he denies it, then you come back and come.
Yeah.
In this case, what it's already existing. You're not looking to do anything, what am I denying?
The registry of deeds needs a standard plan to change it. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's after you guys.
Okay.
I guess what's?
Either approve or disapprove, but do you like the special permit? I think she just, I think she should just fill out an application to apply for a special permit. I don't, if she needs it, denial letter, I don't know what I'd be denying. Denying the fact that she can't have two families? I can give her that.
Well, all that would be is an hour that she requires.
She requests a special permit for two families.
That's fine, all right.
But right now it's an in-law apartment, right?
But he, I don't know, I haven't been there. He doesn't sound like it's an apartment.
She's telling us it's an in-law, and she wants to turn?
She borrowed an in-law apartment, but it sounds to me like it's an apartment to me. Because it's separate utilities, no connection between the main residence.
Who builds this?
I believe it was built back in the 60s or 70s.
Can you look back and see?
I mean, I'll look in five.
But it would be the, yeah.
Special permit. I mean, I'm not doing any construction, not trying to build it.
We deny it till we have the, we exist.
It's our area of the apartment. The only thing I need is to make sure that it meets the five, because my main residence.
When was this?
Yeah, I think it was back in the 60s or 70s, I don't know the exact year, but it was before my time.
Well, like you said, we'll try to get her on board, if she doesn't apply.
I wouldn't apply, I request his own. Come in the office, it's an in-law.
She knows sounds complicated.
Yeah, a lot of it's not her, but.
It goes for us, not him.
It is, please, it is, please, and I call up to him.
Yeah, I think she wants to convert, he's got inspection.
Amazing, well, thank you all.
That's, that's building. Especially, we're just having discussions on special permit. She won't kind of deny a letter, because she doesn't buy the use of special permit, she applies to us.
That's what I mean.
So there is no denial.
That's why I don't think I need to give, I think she just needs to come in and sell it.
The way in my mind, I could draw a weapon, it would be that she used to get the proper building codes. And you would go back and say, yes, and all of this is a building code, but you need to go over the board.
I'll go there, you want to? It was a property, it was an in-law apartment at one time, but now it is.
Right. Shouldn't there be record of that?
What's that?
Shouldn't there be record of that?
Yeah, I look in, I look in five, I mean, I don't think.
It was built in the 60s.
Some people would think, some pads are this big, some pads are that.
One year ago, May of 2021, for the special permit for the in-laws of previous owners.
Yeah, but.
And it's, it's an in-law that was purchased in 1990, which begins with a bylaw, so it was grandfathered and blessed a bylaw in an apartment, produced by family members only. But you all approved it unanimously.
We approved the in-law apartment, but that was, yeah, but we didn't, we didn't go there and inspect to see what was, fell on us, it's, they're two separate things.
Right. I just thought it was like, that was a year ago.
Well, that was a year ago.
That was right when I bought it.
You have to do the application, come back and?
Did somebody inspect it? Something had to inspect for?
No, no, no.
I mean, somebody did do an inspection.
I think that might be a good idea in the future.
Yeah, they're saying like it's.
Inspection.
I mean, they send it in, they state that everything, everything is the same, it's as in-law, nothing's different than what was passed.
They're signing affidavit.
They signed an affidavit, yeah. So unless there's someone that complains about it, then you get involved, because we've had that too.
They made it over 40 years, nobody complaining about it, and see how that could be a problem.
So final decision is I'm not?
Well, we have next on the agenda is Cheryl Howell for Moss Brothers, earth removal permit, I take. This is an informational, I hope there's no application in front of us, I have not. You guys want to hear this, or?
I mean, nothing we can do.
Nothing that we can do right now for you, because there's nothing in front of us that we can, we can tell you to do, you know? You have, you have to, you have to go to tomorrow night's meeting with the selectmen.
But they're supposedly just going to open it and close it because the application has valid order.
And they're still doing it, right?
And they're struggling. That's the letter we got this morning. They're, they're basically running their trucks and they're taking this bog to their other piece of property in Bridgewater.
That they, that they can do, because if they're doing agricultural use, they can do that. They can go from one bog to the next.
Can they go over, over town lines in the bylaws?
Yes, if they own the property, the people that own the property are the Moss Brothers.
Yeah.
And they own property in Calva, they own property in, all over the place. They can, they can run trucks from this property to that property as long as they're using it for the same, for the purpose, the agricultural purpose. Mr. Perry?
I went down today and I witnessed a truck leaving site, followed the Bridgewater, they own bog just over Bridgewater, Halifax Bridgewater line. Now, I was at a meeting some time ago and they kind of basically told us what they were going to do. Because it's agriculture and it's a like the farm community, they are allowed to move material from one bog, one farmer, to another farm without any warrants. That's what they stated. I am going to craft a letter tomorrow to Tom Council and get clarification of where the town's rights are. Because bigger than the whole thing about the traffic on the road is the fact that it's in Zone 2 Agricultural Protection District. And in my mind, agriculture should not trump public waters at all. So I need clarification from Tom Council before I can, I've already wrote, wrote a letter to the voter selectmen, basically saying they should not approve the earth removal permit because of the Zone 2. It's a direct violation of the zoning by law.
Well, they have, they have permits from the NRCS that they, they can do, they approved their plan for water recovery.
Tailwater recovery system.
Tailwater recovery system, they have that in place. And they also, when they're moving the material from one bog, like you said, from one bog, whether it could be in Calva or anywhere in the state of Massachusetts, as long as their name is Moss Brothers on that piece of property, they're allowed to move there.
Excuse me, Chairman. They can move from?
Which in-?
Kimberly Kavicki, conservation. I just finished a two-hour site visit at Moss Brothers because we got many complaints that came through and without a Hong Kong agent and without deputy in the office anymore. I was contacted, so I went down today and the complaints that came in from the neighbors were false. We found nothing wrong with the property, they weren't doing anything that the neighbors said that they were doing, they were not removing endangered species, they weren't harming anything, they weren't within 100-foot buffer, they're not within the drink and supply, they are not within the water wells. And not that I'm a scientist or a farmer like yourself, Miss Nazarela, but they are allowed to move their own materials from one fountain to the next so long as they are not selling it. And they're not selling it as of right now. All they're doing is keeping their profit margin in the plans that they have in place in front of the selectmen. There is so much misinformation going out there from the residents and others that it's an educational issue. And that's what I expressed to them today. It is, it's an educational issue, and there is a lot of misinformation going out from the residents that could legit put them out of business. And I can understand the concerns, but as of the complaints going in, as of today, it isn't right, and they do understand that if the permit was to be issued by the selectmen, that they do have to come and front fight.
Mr. Perry?
I stopped on my way at the bog, to the Bridgewater, on my way to this meeting. All the material they brought in today is already in spirit. They're rebuilding type of roads down there, so it's not like the stockpile material have been down the road, they're going to sell it.
I mean, I've called FSA and see what, if they did the NRCS office today, they, they have their permits in place. By doing that, they are allowed to do what they, what they need to do.
You know, the tailwater recovery system is, it's an improvement to what's going on down. However, it's 25 feet into the aquifer. So I spoke with Mr. Nivel, he talked about, talks relying that pond, you know, impervious membrane, something that does not reach right into the water table. He, at that time, before he became disgruntled, I say disgruntled, they removed their permit because they knew they didn't need to get one. According to that, but I'm not getting further clarification. But he seemed open to the idea of, yeah, they were going to line the new bogs and open the idea of lining that pond. Also, that right now they have a water, water removal permit to remove water from Mont Poncy.
Yes, they do.
Okay? I mean, so they're going to use less water out of Mont Poncy because they're going to be able to conserve more. The only thing they're going to lose is that evaporation and, you know, saturation. So, so at the end of the day, I mean, if we can come up with an idea that is safe for the aquifer, it's a better deal for the town.
I think the concern really is a lot of the traffic in such a small neighborhood.
I followed, I followed the traffic trail, tried to hide there today, and I was literally driving 10 miles an hour down, down the street.
And at least the park was called three times.
Oh, no, no, I'm just, it's a, it's a very sandy area.
They were very.
It's not in great shape, I think.
They were very conscientious on the way they were traveling the, the streets.
Speaking frankly, technically, regarding the traffic and when we moved the pub, I would have been called police when it was not intended.
Where do you, where do you, you live on Lane Street?
121. And as I was driving back in the neighborhood today after medical appointment, I had to drive up on an abandoned between 7th and 8th Avenue because the truck was not giving way. They didn't move over, they were driving down the middle, and then maybe drive off on Main Bank and park, basically until they were alive. And this morning, another neighbor was returning an escaped dog to a fenced yard, and she witnessed a truck leaving, pull up onto, into the yard of the, of the neighbors.
You have to address that with the, with the police station and the truck.
I do, I'm just saying that they were called, called to police.
They will have to do something.
They weren't called, because one of the incidents happened to me.
Did you grab a white vehicle?
She was.
That was following the truck that she's talking about. She was parked before the truck even came up to it, on the side of the road.
Yeah.
She pulled right over park.
The road is now, the road is now.
We understand that, we understand that. But I was right behind the vehicle when she pulled over way in advance and just pulled over a buck. Not saying that she couldn't get through, nothing to do with me, I just had to be there right there.
When I went down, I had to pull over too, just because the road's now.
Mr. Chairman, Mark, I'm 30 Lane Street. I think to her point, the reason why she pulled over, we do this through foggy season, we don't really mind, we get it, it's foggy season. We're used to it, and that's why we pull over, we get out of the way. They were driving safe, I understand that, and you know what, they had the police speed limit trap up for a while, they knew what we were looking for. Let's be honest, they did. The problem is, is that when we're not there, or we're not watching, they do not always drive cautiously, not all of them, but some of them. My concern is very much for those people who are going to be out doing their everyday thing, but they hope.
They hope cranberries out of there in the fall, don't they?
They do, but that's a short period of time is my concern.
And I don't know how long this project is going to take, and nobody knows unless, they have to go off on the selecting, find that out. We're not going to, we can't do anything here for you.
That's, no, I'm just making my statement.
I don't know what their intentions are, I don't believe the, doing what they're doing is not going to be the million, the million yard removal project that was proposed. And the trucks that I did see moving gravel out of site were all Hummer trucks, they were all company owned, they weren't gypsy truckers, you know, which they may tend to drive a little more, you know, unreasonable, because, you know, they, they know all the hours or whatever.
Yes.
And when I was down there for my site inspection, they're not looking to build a brand-new area, they're actually looking to take an existing bog to turn it into their reservoir. They're not looking to unearth and take down trees and other things that have been going out of bounds.
The planning committee, 67 acres.
Yes.
Can I make a statement to that? That's actually Jeremy Gillespie, 9th Street. The original plan that they showed, did show them taking out entire hills with trees to connect the Limebrook bog, the last one in Budden Lake, to one of the other bogs, and then going into another area closer to Aquifers, removing a hill.
Unless we see a plan, we can't.
So I'm talking, I'm talking about the plan that was submitted to the board. And my understanding of the bylaw is they're allowed to remove up to 1,000, keep a guard to sand with no permit, and because it's farming, that's fine. I haven't complained about that, but to say they're not going to convert anything that's currently feral land into new bogs is not what they showed the board on the original plan.
Hold on a second.
Can I just ask, Mr. Perry, will you talk to the, because a couple of my points were basically just the, the project area is fully within the Zone 8 Circus Water Protection District, that is correct, right?
A portion of the reconstruction is in the Zone 2.
Okay, that was.
There is a portion that's out of the Zone 2.
Okay.
So part of my letter is also going to be, they need to put stakes out or designate where the Zone 2 line crosses through their property, so that we can please the fact that they're not digging in Zone 2.
Because that.
Zone 2, you're restricted to what you can use on the bogs.
Four feet, they need to be no closer than four feet to the seasonal high groundwater table.
That was my, my second thing, was the project area is fully within Zone 2, the, well, head protection district, so.
I was also told when I was down there at the meeting that some of their bogs are actually below or in the water table, okay? So those are pre-existing bogs, there's not really much we can do about those.
And then just about the, you were going to make sure about the, the vermicules that are up there, and just making sure that they're going to protect what's up?
Vermicules, Conservation Commission's jurisdiction.
What was the question? Just about the?
Have they registered?
You guys have to take that off, take that up with the, with the.
And if they're not registered, vermicules, they need to be registered.
Okay. And then just in part about, so if they go to sell the earth, is that then against the bylaws?
Yes.
So they can, they can request a permit to sell through the town, and a three-mogul is typically 25.
That's up to, that's up to the, yeah.
And that's, it's an open-ended, they can charge with them.
And it could bring in a good amount of revenue to the town.
Well, the water table is more important than revenue.
No.
The water supply.
I'm just answering, I'm not against protecting the water supply.
So we don't have to make that decision? We can't go in and plug it up now?
No, I know that.
David Masiello, 1610th app, are they, is, is, if they withdraw their permits for what their, their current plans were for tomorrow's evening meeting, are they going to submit a new plan for their?
I don't know that.
Okay. Can it be requested and allow the butters to be notified because they were not notified?
You have to ask what's in front of them tomorrow night.
Zoning has no, no, no say on what?
If not in here in front of us, let me give you any information about it. Sorry. Yeah?
Just wanted to have the open statement, I can say.
But we didn't, we didn't know anything about.
It's just an informational hearing, but.
Yeah. Come on.
What we should have heard from the email, we signed the email, and they're telling you, and that's about it. Thank you.
I'm taking my time.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody wants to approve the minutes of June 23rd and July 11th? I've already given them a number of times. What do you think? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 13th, 2022, yes, submitted. You second?
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Myself, yes. Uh, uh, July 11th.
Sorry.
No, little print, we're going to be a big print. I'll make a motion to approve the many, the meeting minutes of July 11th, 2022, as presented. Second?
I'll second.
Tina?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Myself, yes, it passes, but they're. I mean, how fast expressed? I mean, how fast, express, we did the bills and we approved the bills.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the bills as presented.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
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 Well, yes. All of that is, done. Now, the R&amp;J LLC ESCOR refund petition, 920 Country Club Estate, we refunded their money?
Yeah, that was part of the bill.
Yep. Memo from the planning board, cycling for Kennedy, and what do you think about the dog kennel? Any comments about the dog?
I mean, I looked at it, but there's nothing to really determine at the moment until we know how the dog is going to be there.
Was, I missed this completely.
Is any complaint with neighbors or dog kennel?
There was on our old farm.
I know. Just correspondence.
Okay.
Next, I have a question on that. We're at Jordan Fitness.
Okay.
Backside.
We got the email from Conservation on 175 Rivers Street.
We approved that petition. They have to go to Conservation.
And the one on Wood Street?
Yep.
Any other business?
I'll get a quick update on bylaw review committee. We did meet last Wednesday. And what we're doing is we're trying to consolidate wherever there is multiple versions of certain things. When we did Article 2, in the purpose, we list agricultural residential, spell everything out there, but actually that's in the use tables. So we're going to take that language out and just make sure that it's all on the use tables. So when you want to do, you want to find something, you go to the use tables, and you don't have to look at three other spots. Oh, by the way, over here, it said this. That's going to be eliminated so that we can kind of get everything in one location so there's not two or three different things that we have to look at.
Well, it's nice, too, to have an update in the future. You don't have to update it in 15 spots.
Exactly right. Everything's in one spot. So it's very slow-going. We're running on Article 2, and we haven't gotten to the meat of a lot of this stuff that's coming. Does that just get you up to date as to what's going on in the bylaw review? So decision left, Cranberry Drive, Cohen. All you guys signed is no. Should be yes, correct? Because we have, which was a yes. Well, we said no to his appeal.
I asked you.
The appeal, the... But we answered yes. Allah! So on the decision form for Mr. Cohen, Cranberry Drive, are we signing no or yes?
So Michael, I circled the rule.
No, you circled, denied it.
Circled. And it's not.
So deny me, then deny Joseph's application.
So are we a yes? Yes, we deny it?
Because you're not ordering, you're asking for a return.
Okay.
That's deny it.
Okay. So yes, so it is a no because we denied. It's not because we say yes, because we...
Okay. I was going to say yes.
No. Wow.
I know.
Did mom say yes or no? Well, you see.
I don't know.
Did we, like, I didn't sign it though, so...
Were you?
I don't think I needed to. There was nothing...
No, I didn't write three signatures.
Okay, so she was asking if there was another form in there. Did you guys sign that?
It's clear. It's clear.
To have the authority to sign the bills.
I know. She's asking, did we sign, did you guys sign that?
It's in the folder somewhere. She's saying it's in the folder somewhere.
Authorization and the bills to sign. We have to sign our names.
All right? He says it's in the yellow bills folder.
So we should have all your names like in the files.
This one here?
She said bills. I don't see it in here.
You're close. It's Monday. What are you going to do?
Would you guys like to discuss the letter from the attorney?
Yeah, it's a little disheartening. I mean, I think the attorney should come when we request them to come. I mean, it was more like a CYA letter than anything else, and we had plenty of other questions, not even regarding directly that subject. So my recommendation is the board just keep at it and get them here and maybe put in another letter explaining that. I don't know how anybody else feels.
What do you like, Terry?
I think, I think we do. I'm still confused by the letter, to be honest with you. It didn't, it didn't seem to resolve what we were... It feels like we were rushed off. Yeah. Like, stuff behind it.
They just didn't want to answer us.
Jim, is that the letter regarding the line that paid the bill in Use Town Council? Can that be, that going to be available? I know that people sent out some sort of request. You know, public doesn't know what that response was.
They didn't, they didn't give us a response. Oh, they gave us a response, but it was not the one we wanted.
It was just legal mumbo jumbo.
It was just quoting what he said in the previous email. He itemized it out and didn't give us not any concrete evidence from... He should have been here and discussed this with us, but he didn't.
Is the board going to ask that he come in, whoever the council was, or give an explanation?
We'd like to, and we want to get to the bottom of this.
Plus, there were other questions that I don't feel he addressed at all. So, you know, can't read our minds. It should be there. We were given permission by Ashley DeSessa that each one of us could go individually if we had any questions with this anonymous fiasco thing that went on. And instead of spending a ton of money, why doesn't, and you don't want anything done in the dark, right? Why don't, why doesn't the attorney come here, one shot, answer all our questions all at once?
For all, for all the money that we spent for the attorney, he should come in front of us and discuss the situation and get to the, get to the bottom of it. And this way here, we know what the protocol is from day one.
And I'm not, I'm not comfortable as a taxpayer that anybody can just anonymously use our attorney, and we don't know who is using an attorney. What the attorney answers is probably privilege, but I don't think, I think the town has a right to know who they're paying an attorney for. I'm...
Is the attorney claiming, that attorney client privilege to answer the question?
Yes.
Well...
That was one of, one of the things.
The email came back with the answer, but the attorney refuses to identify who used Tom Council.
We can't just, you know, if I wanted to talk to the attorney, I gotta, am I going to go call him and say, hey?
There's a certain protocol.
Yeah, you have to follow the protocol again with the selectmen, get an approval from the selectmen, and you...
I mean, what's my own fault if I don't want Ashley DeSessa to know that I'm using the town attorney? Who is she? Who does she think she is? Maybe, maybe, you know, if I'm going to have privilege, I want privilege. So is that what we're saying? Anybody can go use the town council?
That becomes a, you know, a free-for-all.
The thing that probably happens is if, and you can, someone can weigh privilege, which obviously you need to know who made that initial inquiry in order to get privilege. And I don't know that this board, or the attorneys, could claim privilege because the board requested the information. It greatly impacted this board. It adds, in fact, the board was given instructions not to allow this to participate in alcohol and should not be privileged.
Well, the board didn't go to the attorney. An individual, an anonymous individual went to the attorney, and that's a problem in my mind. Because if I'm going to claim privilege, why does Ashley even need to know why? Why is she the sole person that gets to know and nobody else does? I just, as a taxpayer, forget a zoning board member, as a taxpayer, I have a real problem with this.
Transparency.
And by the way, our response said that the attorney didn't tell the individuals to reduce themselves, which...
No.
I'm sorry. He spoke, he spoke to the two individuals involved. I just don't agree with his answer at all, at all. Even more reason, I think, that the board should ask him to come in. Plus, there's other questions you had about how people are appointed, and there was other questions people had. And it's just, I don't think it's right or fair that the attorney gets to choose, when we've been given permission, that the attorney gets to choose to come and not to come. I don't think that that's fair.
I mean, transparency is paramount in here. Whatever you guys do should be made available to the public. I don't believe the town council has the right to say, you know, we can't do this, but we can't tell you why. That doesn't make any sense.
I don't know if there's procedure, I think there is, for this board to seek an independent, court-appointed counsel. That may be the way to go.
I can tell you, Matt and Bert can probably agree that over the years, when they had one town council doing everything, it became very problematic. And then in the 90s or 2000s, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, they went to separate councils, a lean use type council, which greatly benefited the board because their specifics was lean use. It wasn't whether or not they were arguing about something else. And I think that worked for a while for years. And then that changed, you know, last election. So is it going to be scheduled again on your agenda? I'll just watch the agenda.
Well, you would have to ask.
Can we request that the attorney be present the next month?
I can try that. So for what, like, what reason do I need it? Because of the procedure?
Just for, you know, clarification as to what he told us. You know, see, if we're not, if we're not convinced, Mo, what he said, I mean, we need to have him there to explain exactly what he said. And there are the other, other issues that we had mentioned last month that I don't think we addressed at all in that way. Am I wrong, Bob?
Not really.
So again, back to...
We just want a clarification on the protocol and all the, all the, the letter that he sent us, we wanted all of it.
The last letter that he sent?
Yeah. He itemized everything, but...
In person would be best. Because, you know, that way they want to get personal discussion, you know, with done with it. Not emails back and forth or Zoom or whatever. I think it's, in person is the best way to go.
I'll have a little take on that agenda. Sad to say that Mr. Bozari is resigning as zoning board as of today, and sad to see him go, and wish him all the luck.
I second that. Dan, you always have good insights as to what's going on.
I'm a pain in the ass. You can say...
No, no, you're not a pain in the ass. You know what residents feel and everything else, and you have good responses to all of it. I think you've seen, I think you've seen some of the residents come up to you afterward and say thank you for your...
You spoke up for them.
Yeah. That's the letter.
Well, it was a pleasure. I thank all of you, you know, terrific bunch of guys. I want anybody who sees this, terrific bunch of people, everybody here, glad Bert's here. Thank you so much, Bert. I know we all learned a lot from you, you know. It's just work commitments at this point. It's just work commitments that, as you, as you've all seen, how many meetings I have missed and either had a Zoom or missed completely. I just don't feel that it's fair to the applicants, you know, they're, they're spending money on engineers and their time and their waiting months. I just don't think it's fair at this point. Maybe in the future I can come back or serve on another board, but as of right now, that's just not in the cards.
Well, we're going to be sure. And good luck.
All right, thank you. If I can assist in any way, you know, do any legwork for you, I'm more than happy to help if I can fit it in.
Is these not a bad thing to me?
No, it's not a bad thing.
Well, it's been a pleasure, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Me and Terry, make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second. Second? Yes.
Yes, yes.
It's like, it's nice for one.